Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order our council workshop for Wednesday, February 5th, 2025, at 6:30 PM. Our first order of business is going to be the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody would please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, if you'd take roll call, please.
Mayor Jacobs.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dold.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Dold.
President.
Councilmember Karfodis.
Here.
We have a quorum of seven.
Okay, thank you. Before we start, I'd like to make a couple of comments. One, if you have your cell phone, please silence it, because we don't have those noises in the background. And also, after Mr. Gibbons gives our presentation, we will have comments at that time. So please hold all questions, council and public, till after the future plans and goals part of the agenda. With that, I will go to item four, which is items for consideration. Mr. Gibbons, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You know, there has been a lot of community interest and a lot of community investment in the Radcliffe Center since before my administration, and a significant amount of grant money was acquired. And, you know, as this project has developed, and as I took over five months ago, there's a few things that caught my attention that I needed to address, develop a plan for. The Radcliffe Center, I recognize, is something that needed to be addressed. As there's significant... Today, 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 today. Sorry, couldn't help that. How are we doing on echo?
Great.
Or less than good. It's pretty bad.
Yeah, I'm not prepared for that.
Yeah, just...I'll talk loud. So when you purchase, for whatever price, an 88,000-square-foot building and make millions of dollars in investment, you put yourself in a position where now you've acquired a very large community asset, and you have to figure out how to manage it. We were provided a plan by the previous city manager to do that, and for the first, for this entire budget year, we've been moving towards that, with some stoppages out of concerns. Tonight, my hope is to speak candidly about where we're at, where I think we need to go, and what we can do to utilize this business, or this building, to benefit the community. But as I see it right now, we're at a crossroad. Our crossroad is, do we continue to proceed down the path of the original vision for this community center, with the imagination station, both in its scope and in its ideas? Do we continue to utilize the building as drawn? But I want to do so in a manner that takes into context the city's financial position at this time. When I took over, the budget was passed under the previous administration, has this general appropriation is what passed for the budget. That budget included the utilization of $2.5 million of our rainy day fund in order to make ends meet. That amount of money, given that we have about a $9.7 million rainy day fund, if we continue to operate at this pace, we'll deplete that within three and a half years. It concerned me as I came in the door, but, you know, when you look at a budget, you know, is it, were those because of capital costs? Were those ongoing? Is that a structural budget issue I need to be concerned about? As I'm looking at it, I believe we need to reduce some of our footprint within the city. A lot of it comes from the increase here, but we'll have to make some cuts, and I've already kind of begun reducing spending to a large degree throughout the city in order to balance the budget towards next year and not deplete our rainy day fund. If you remember during my interview for City Manager, I expressed my appreciation to our previous city managers who maintained a large rainy day fund. And the great thing about that is, is municipal budgeting in Michigan, as I stated during the course of talking about our Public Safety Village, is that, you know, you're very, we're very constricted by Prop. and Headley. Increasing taxes is not easy nor desirable, and the state shared revenue we receive sort of was our trade-off for Prop. and Headley, which restricted our ability to raise funds, is often limited and has been underfunded for a long time. So every Michigan community is under some significant financial constraints. I watched during the course of being a police chief, police officer, sergeant, lieutenant, and chief, and also a union member during that time, and a union representative, is that the city acted very responsibly to maintain excellent services with less and less each year, and then began to grow slowly and conservatively. So it is my intent to, over this next budget period, and honestly, I think really what we're talking about is a Radcliffe Center meeting, but also probably the beginning of our budget talks. I think it's important. So as we talk about what we want to do with Radcliffe Center, I just want to make everyone aware of these facts. $2.5 million of the rainy day fund was used to balance our budget this year. Cannot keep, continue at that pace and be fiscally responsible. The projected shortfall for this year was approximately $900,000. We won't hit that because we've reduced spending at Radcliffe on operations significantly. The projected shortfall for Parks and Rec in total is approximately $1.4 million. In perspective of the 18, 19 fiscal year, was about $500,000 shortfall for all of Parks and Rec. That included what used to be considered the Community Resource Department. During the last administration, they combined those two departments. So I went back through the budgets, put them together, and it was around $500,000 of the budget the general fund would contribute to keep Parks and Rec and community resources open. But given these numbers, I think it's important as we discuss what we do next and what we want to see here, we consider the concept of capital versus operational costs. We have been the wonderful recipient of millions of dollars in federal and state grant funding over the last five, six years, and that's awesome. But the problem with capital funding is, it goes away someday, and you're left to operate whatever you built. And when it comes to capital costs, we built a lot of rooms, and we spent a lot of money on an 88,000-square-foot building that we're going to have to then operate. And those operational costs are significant. So it's awesome to get federal grant money, and it's awesome to get ARPA money and to build these things. But it's another thing to develop a revenue stream and not rely on the general fund to fund those operations. So I have grave concern that if we continue to operate in the previous vision, that the operations costs will cause us to continue to dip in the rainy day fund, or cause us to make cuts elsewhere in the city to some of our core services. And ultimately, that's not up to me. I will provide recommendations, but at the same time, council has to decide that, as you are the representatives of the people. But just to be clear, capital costs, they're to build buildings, they're to buy cars, they're one-time purchases. They give us something that we can then work with. Operational costs are like their angry brother. They show up and they're around forever, and they don't go anywhere, because you've got to manage that asset, and you've got to find a way to make that float. Imagine buying, you win the Lotto, you buy a million-dollar mansion, and you can't afford the taxes. You have to take into consideration, what can I afford to own going forward? And that's my concern with this. Even a perfectly executed vision of a lot of the things that are planned here, I have concerns about their long-term viability. Perhaps it's because I've been a city employee for 20-some years and watched the ups and downs. I lived through the Great Recession. I lived through the times where we had to make hard decisions because of expenditure, because of our revenue streams being cut by things we didn't control. The property values drop out from under you, the state cuts shared revenue, and you have to figure out how to deal with those. And they happen. Recession's happened every so many years, ask any economist. So they eventually do hit you. If you, if we're just hanging on by a thread here, is that really a sustainable thing when those inevitable economic downturns, those inevitable revenue streams get cut, slightly adjusted, or our costs increase in some other area? So as we approach tonight's discussion, as we approach what we're going to do next, I just, I want to put that into our heads. And this other concept, well, really, this is the line that sticks in my head, and how I felt for the last five months when we're talking about the Radcliffe Center. We're talking about chasing revenues just to survive instead of growing based on community demand. In my mind, you build programs within the city because the city demands it, and there's clearly people coming to it, and you grow programs from small to large because there's people coming in to do it, and there's an identifiable revenue stream that supports it. The really great thing about our Parks and Rec is, it can operate at cost. Businesses can't provide that service. So we can do things at a low cost, but we have to do them at cost so they don't hurt our other services. So that's, we build slow. We build in a progressive manner where the revenues meet the costs, and our community gets the benefit of what we can do, not what we think we should do. And right now, we're chasing those revenues, and it puts a lot of strain on the city, but it also puts a lot of strain on our budget, because we have to contribute from the general fund to chase those revenues. The other concept that sticks in my mind as I proceeded and tried to think about what we should do next is the concept of sunk cost. Just because we've spent money, does that mean we continue to spend money on those costs? Like, if we buy something and we realize that's not going to work out, do we continue to put money towards it even though there's a lower chance of failure, or there's a high chance of failure and a lower chance of success? Or should we instead base our decisions on future costs and future benefits, not what we've already spent? What we spent is what we spent, what's been done is what's been done. We need to move forward thinking, hey, how can we maximize the value of everything we've done for our citizens, but not insist that something that wasn't, isn't going to work or we're not convinced is going to work, will work? If we were really doing well on revenues and our general fund wasn't at risk at all, maybe we could try that a little longer. But we're really going headfirst into a budget season where we're going to have to make some hard decisions anyways. So this is where we'll probably have to start with those hard decisions, at least that's why I recommend as the city manager. But ultimately, understand, when I make these decisions, they come with 20-some years of watching Garden City's budget. Living through my first few years here, every year I was told, oh, you're probably getting laid off this year. Not, you're probably not going to, you're not going to be working here a little bit longer unless this happens. Luckily for me, by the skin of my teeth, I managed not to for the 20-some years. Being a police officer helped, because there were other employees who didn't, weren't so lucky, they did get laid off. And it's my goal to develop a budget and a plan for this city that makes sure no one has to have those experiences, and I'm sad that I'm even, you know, we're even talking about these issues right now. Because of how far we came, that rainy day fund did not show up overnight. $10 million sitting in our bank to secure ups and downs of municipal budget didn't happen. It was hard work. And as I stated when I, in my interview, that is a priority of mine to make sure we maintain. Of course, with council's approval, but if you're asking me, that's an essential core of how we maintain good services. And I continue to harp on sunk costs, though, because this is what happens when we start talking about these things. It's called the sunk cost fallacy, reluctance to abandon the project, because, well, there might be some political backlash, or people might say, oh, you guys, that was silly that you wasted that money. And be unwilling to accept that we did, just to save ourselves from the appearance that we did something wrong. Well, you know what? Government is hard, decisions are hard, we don't always do the right thing. The sooner we realize that sometimes and make that adjustment, the better, and the better we serve the people. And sometimes that's sacrificing a little bit of your own face, you know? I was not champ when I was police chief, decrying this building or anything like that, so I don't want anyone to think that, you know, there's any reason to look backwards. I just want to look forwards and not worry about those backlashes and make the right decisions, because at the end of the day, we got to get a cop to somebody's door in a couple minutes when you call. We got to get a fireman and a rescue rig to your house if you're having a medical issue. The water's got to turn on, and the roads have to be nice and flat. That, at the end of the day, is what we provide in a core-based service. So that's what's important. Whether we have to change course, that is what it is. And then sometimes what happens when you're trying to figure out how to get out of a sunk cost problem is, you spend more money on marketing and staffing, you keep dumping money in, because eventually it's going to succeed if we just keep trying. And what happens then is, you just continue, you end up spending more of your money and not getting where you need to get to. So then you just leave the budget strains if we continue to go down this path. I don't want it to sacrifice police, fire, or public works. Given the deficit we face this year, we might face next year, it will likely face next year, there will have to be other reductions in costs. I don't think they'll have to be drastic, especially if we take them sooner than later, but at the same time, I don't want this process and this program to cause those. And I certainly don't think there's an appetite, but, you know, this, I'm not, on the politics side of it, on the management side of it, to go to the city to issue more bonds or raise taxes to cover any shortfalls for a building. You know, that's ultimately council's decision, but not currently any recommendation I would make. So the big question is, how much is council willing to spend on Parks and Recreation at the Radcliffe Center in light of the city's current budget position? Ultimately, tonight isn't about voting. Tonight is about hearing me speak, hearing Erica speak about what we can do to make this as positive a building as we possibly can. But at the end of the day, during the course of the next week or so, for council to make some decisions on where we need to head, and I think the sooner we start to pivot in the right direction, the better and the softer we can land. Just, this is my last slide, then Erica will start talking about some of this, but I just wanted to preface it. You know, I told Erica, I'm going to be the really bummy part about this presentation. I apologize, but it's my job, and I care more about this city than people thinking I'm a bummer sometimes, but it's been so good to me, I want to make sure I'm doing what I think is best. And this is where we're at. When we just had the Maplewood Center, it was a 45,000-square-foot building, and our net operating, this is all of Parks and Rec, cost us about $514,000. Now we've taken over an 88,000-square-foot building, and it cost the entire, all of Parks and Rec, cost us about $1.3, $1.4 million. And, you know, it's funny, the pictures, that's about scale, we guessed, but it's pretty close. You know, Maplewood is, it's just a smaller, we got a lot more to manage and do. That's not to say we can't have some really creative ideas. We've done some thinking and some brainstorming and some connection with some other cities, parts of our city who have operating revenues and stuff to work on some solutions, we'll talk about them a little bit. We can turn this into a positive. I just want to make sure everybody understands that the original direction we were heading has a cost to it that will affect other areas more than just this building. And I'll leave it up to Erica. Sorry, Erica.
Wonderful kickoff. You can only go up. All right. So I'm going to start with a bit of a recap on the project and the investment that we've, I think at this point, pretty familiar with, just under $8 million being invested into the Radcliffe Center. You know, when I first got here, the focus was really on grant compliance, trying to get a roof on this building and get some of that reimbursement back. So those things have happened. We got $2.8 million back. The roof, they're working on their punch list, so we are very, very close to that completely wrapping up. And really, the emphasis is turning toward operating, right? So a couple of notes that I want to say, you know, it's so important that throughout this project, we're focused on a couple of things. One, everything we're doing should align with our Parks Master Plan, and two, we have to be thinking operationally. What's going to sustain the operation of, you know, almost 88,000 square feet, everything that's involved with that? So on the next slide, I don't know if you all have a copy of the master Parks and Rec plan. If you don't and would like one, I would be happy to have them made for you. Oh, next slide. Oh, I got a clicker, I'm so sorry. Never mind, this is great, great. Okay. So this is, this was completed at the end of '23, and this is the guiding plan. You know, it's developed with input from the public, from staff, the Parks and Recreation Commission, there's consultants. It's the roadmap, it's the strategy. This is our North Star, telling us like what we're doing, really how we're doing, and, you know, where we're going. It really should be protecting us from getting too far off of course. And, you know, one of the hard things for me when I read through this and I look at the survey that was done in the summer of 2023, you know, over, like 320 respondents, you know, with some open-ended questions about what do, you know, what do we want in the city? And there's a whole lot of stuff in here. What's not in there is a teaching kitchen, a movie theater, you know, gaming, some of the things that we never even asked if people wanted or got input on it. And that's really tough, because that's what, that's what this is for. There's a whole list of things that people want in our community. You know, some of them, dog park, more restrooms in the parks, updating the equipment we already have. You know, there's a lot of interest in adult fitness and wellness, and I think for me as a Parks and Rec professional, this is really important that we honor and that we're aware of what the community has told us, what our staff is telling us. And I think we started to just go in a direction that now we have to deal with. So let's see. Oh, and one other thing I want to mention, you know, the master plan, all the DNR grants that come through, if your project isn't in the master plan, it's not eligible for funding. So there's like a lot of purpose to having things in your master plan, and there's just so many things missing that were being done at the same time. So it's just, you know, discouraging, but that's our action plan. Okay, so now the city owns, you know, and is responsible for managing, maintaining, and operating 87,000-square-foot building. I remember when I first got here, the Parks and Rec Commission, I heard councilmembers asking for operating. What are the operating costs? We want this information. And you are all absolutely correct to be looking for that information. Once you commit to a building like this, you really need to understand what those costs are. We've been working on that. I've been trying to get an understanding myself the last nine months. So let's dive into kind of a broad look here on the screen. You know, we've got utilities, right? Water, electric, gas, basic staffing. So this is really just staff that's required to open the doors, to allow our renters to operate, to, you know, support the other services that aren't even in Parks and Rec. So right now, we have around 250,000 guest costs associated with part-time staff, and then really, when you have that many staff, you need a full-time staff to schedule, train, and supervise those part-time staff. Maintenance, so often, we never want to think about maintenance, especially big, you know, mechanical systems. We obviously are investing into a couple of those right now, the roof, the HVAC system. But there's still a lot of annual services, or a lot of day-to-day maintenance. We know that when Schoolcraft had this building, they had two full-time people in this building. And so here we come. We've got a wonderful DPW department, they have a lot of other responsibilities, and there's a lot of requests coming at them all the time for just daily things, big things. And then there's your preventative maintenance, there's your additional inspections, all sorts of things that go along with maintenance, and cleaning, right? So just not a few times a week, but the floors, all sorts of costs associated to maintain it. Then we have programming, so that's really, now we're talking Parks and Rec, right? The staff, the materials, the, what else do we have in that? All the things I listed in there. Marketing, our database, our concessions. You know, if you look at the budget, roughly, I would say, $650,000 kind of covers staff and those material costs. It's not the easiest to tease out, just the way the budget is, a lot of things are thrown in one bucket. But just full-time employees, fully loaded, is half a million dollars. So these are big costs, but we'll get to the value that these things bring. And then, of course, computer and IT support, so we've just been getting up to speed on what some of those costs are. And we, once we got some numbers, we started dismantling the computer lab. It just does not make sense to pay some of those things. So, you know, those are what we're talking about, operating. Then additionally, over time, we know things, if you own a house, you know, over time, you got to repair things. There's going to be expected investments down the road. Are we prepared to start saving for those and just planning for them? And then I'll just mention, Maplewood is still, you know, a city responsibility being maintained. It has some renovation needs and costs as well. Next, I'm just going to take a peek here. What you're looking at is the entire Parks and Recreation staff. So this is across multiple departments, and when I say departments, that's budget departments. We've got, within the Parks and Rec, there's the park system, so those are the eight parks out there, costs associated with maintaining those. Ice Rink has its own department budget, and then Radcliffe has its own. The, in this photo also is our FRC folks, they have different funding, but they operate really, you know, with us, a lot of overlap in what we do, and we certainly are sharing a building. Here at Radcliffe, you know, my position is 70% funded out of Radcliffe, and then the other four full-time staff are funded out of Radcliffe. And then there's a list of some part-time staff. You know, some of our part-time staff work three hours, because they're an instructor for something, and some of them work up to 29 hours. So there's a big variety. In your blue folder, there is a page that's entitled "Part-Time Staff Positions at Radcliffe." I just included this because I know people have asked about, how do, what is the staffing? What does that look like? And this gives a little guidance of how many staff are here at night, or what these part-time positions are doing. So I included that, I won't go over that now. But in total, you know, Radcliffe is operating at open hour 73 hours a week. Sometimes there's additional hours that we call after hours. The next slide here, okay, a little bit on budget. I did include a budget worksheet that has the three Parks and Rec departments in it. Hopefully, it looks familiar, because I did include a quarterly report in January for you all, because we're at our halfway point, and it's a great time to analyze where we are. You know, the great news, the budget that we have to work with, we're doing really well. Our revenues are exceeding, we're under costs, so on that front, I'm pretty excited. Until you start talking to Tim and you get the news about this shape of the city and what's ahead. So that's what's been hard to navigate, is we kind of felt like things were going all right. And so what we have on the screen, the highlighted bit, is, you know, the area that Tim's already pointed out, this is our concern area. The great thing about Parks and Rec is that we do generate revenue through our, you know, participations, our fees, rentals, concessions, there's advertising, there's program grants, and we're on pace to generate $864,000 of revenue, which is, which is great. You know, I will argue, we are an essential service, Parks and Recreation. We saw in the pandemic the importance of parks, you know, the value that it brings just to mental health, to keeping kids, you know, engaged, for individuals, all the people we see here on a daily basis. Obviously, I'm very passionate and proud of the stuff that we do here, so I just wanted to mention that. But we are operating with a net cost of $800,000, and I know that is of great concern and getting a lot of, we're under microscope. And of course, you know, when we're looking at cuts, one of the things I wanted to do, and in your budget sheet, you should see some highlighted revenue pieces. So what I did is, I, and this is in the folder, it's just some budget pages, and I highlighted in yellow the Radcliffe revenue and the Radcliffe expenditures. And then, within the revenue section, I highlighted four different areas. And I wanted to do that because I wanted to tie them to the programming and the source of the revenue generation. So senior programs, which is in purple, you know, is projected to bring in $35,000 of revenue, and they're on pace, and it's really cool, because they're going to double the programming number. So there's like a $17,000 number, they're on, they've already hit that. So that's a testament to the growth that's happening, and, you know, it's bringing in that revenue. Dance Express is a hugely successful program that we have. They're on pace, you know, to generate over $100,000. The programming, this is the blue item, those are all the youth programs, camps, things that, again, are being generated by our staff that are organizing programming. And then our rentals, you know, we have two big monthly renters, let our annual, about $183,000, if everybody pays on time. But there's other one-time rentals, and those numbers are doubling. We're already hitting our mark at the halfway point. So we're seeing growth, we're seeing revenue generated, and, you know, these tie, they really tie to the staff. So if we look at, you know, oh, the staff is too much, we have to be very careful, because there goes the revenues and the value, too. So I just wanted to point that out. And then I noted here, you know, Spaceport, eSports, movie theater, Card Room, we don't have staff really dedicated to those spaces, and then what you realize is, there's also no revenue coming from them. It doesn't mean it could never happen, but without dedicated staffing, it's really hard to get these things launched, and some of these are very challenging for us. And we're not created by our staff, these concepts. So, you know, right now, those aren't providing meaningful revenue, and they're very challenging for us to manage. Some miscellaneous notes, the concession revenue is also on pace to bring in about $2,000 more than the cost. Spaceport, just for some context, is operating about a net cost of $40,000, and so when I say net cost, that's like, we've got to get that from general fund. There's no revenue offsetting it, and that's really just our part-time staff. And that's really just our part-time staff and the gaming costs to, to our gaming memberships. Those are like costs that we can't do much about. I also want to mention, we have a lot of other non-park partners within us, and Food Pantry is part of our department. Food Pantry, FRC, and Veteran Services, they don't contribute any revenue to the operating budget, so they don't have a rent that they're paying. And I'm not suggesting that they do, but I want to point out that part of our role here, as the Parks and Rec Department, is we're providing operating and overhead cost to several other groups. So I wanted to mention that. Room rental, seniors, youth programming as a whole are meeting direct costs. So, you know, in Parks and Rec, it's very, very unusual that a Parks and Rec department would not have any impact on general fund. It's valued as a city service, and while we can generate revenue, typically, the expectation is there's going to be some costs that come from general fund, but you're going to try to meet your programming cost, right? You're not going to be irresponsible, you're going to try to run as a business, but some of the costs are typically offset by general fund. And those activities that are not meeting cost, we're looking at to move into some independent contracting, to eliminate some of the losses that we do have. We're looking at implementing membership fees for Spaceport. We want to provide resident, non-resident fee structure. I'm a big believer that our community, our residents, they are paying the operating and the general fund costs, and there should be discounts. So that should change immediately. So you're going to be seeing stuff coming to council, asking for approval on some of those fee changes. And then we have a couple of grants I wanted to mention, Senior Alliance and the EBDP, our funds that fund senior programs and a portion of our senior coordinator. And then, so now, that's a little of the backdrop, operating costs. So now we're into that grant spending. This slide is outlining the remaining funds from the ARPA grant for the Wayne County. This was that four million. These are the remaining scope areas with the budgeted amounts left, the, the, kind of the buckets, I call them, that we had talked about that was important. You know, now that we're getting to this point, and we're really looking at operating, it's a chance to review this. Is this what we really want to do? Do we have the, do we have the funds to operate some of these, these items? I also left in your packet, an update on everything that's been spent since November, because I know there were some questions about what's been, being spent. And I can just tell you, everything that's over ten thousand has come to council. There's not a whole lot there. There's the, you know, our roof work, the HVAC consulting, there's a lot of outstanding or encumbered things that we haven't fully paid, but we're committed to, or they're in progress. You know, the FOBs, just to, you know, that project started before my time, and in July, I had mentioned it as a, a project we wanted to complete. And one of the things that's very confusing about that is that we're, we're doing it partially with in-house staff and two different vendors. So you'll see, what we spent at Radcliffe didn't go over ten thousand, and the way that it's been done is like, piece by piece. And it's not, you know, trying to skirt anything, it's just the way that that works as a, a side project that happened, we, like, we tried to do a Dora Weekend. And so, just wanted to mention that, but, you know, there's many projects going on. I always feel like there's so much information that I'm willing to share. I always encourage you, if you have questions or are just curious, you know, to, to ask. I told Tim, maybe y'all want to form a committee, or grab a couple of people and do weekly check-ins or something. There's just so much going on, it's moving fast and slow at the same time, if that makes any sense. But really, I think what's, oh, actually, before we go on the tour, because I think we're going to do the tour here in a moment, I did want to share a couple of the early budgets. And on the upper left is like the original proposed budget that really started the grants. And what's so amazing here is that in this budget, this was back when it was the hub, there was money in there for the key mechanical systems. It was all like critical things, right? There was the, the roof, a new entrance, new boiler, new HVAC, there was asphalt, you know, the hallway lighting, the dance floor, asbestos removal. And then, over time, the next budget, we start seeing kind of the hobby rooms, or like, I'm sorry, specialty rooms, where originally, the proposal was eighty thousand for the teaching kitchen, ninety thousand for teen tech, ninety thousand for the play museum. And I think, you know, this is where we just get going on a train, and it gets so expensive. We saw what these things really cost, and I think this is why we don't want to repeat these things and take another pause, give you information, and let you direct and say, okay, this makes sense for us, right? So I think with that, we're going to do a tour, or is there questions? I don't know what.
I have one question.
Yeah.
I'm a little confused with the projects, projects, scope, ADA bathrooms, already spent ten thousand dollars, remaining cost twenty thousand dollars, and down on the bottom there, the grant money for two hundred thousand.
Yeah, yeah, every, that is moving ahead, so the, this ten thousand is for, we've committed about nine thousand for our architects. And I've got over there our update on the bathrooms. So this money in ARPA was to get us the architects, because the two hundred thousand is for construction only. So that has not been touched. And actually, they're just asking me today, where are you? And I'm, I had a good meeting Friday with our team. We've got a couple of changes we're making to the plans, and we can talk about that a little when we tour.
Okay, we, we're going to take a, take the tour, we'll follow City Manager Gibbons and Ms. Smith. Okay, we'll continue on with Ms. Smith. Thank you for the tour.
Let's see here. Okay, so we're going to do a few slides to deep dive into a couple of the rooms. We talked about some of this on the tour. So the Imagination Station, you know, if the plan kind of stood, there was this thought, okay, where are we going to be after four hundred thousand dollars of investment? And, you know, I did an exercise just to preview, okay, what is an operating cost? So let's say we have open play for thirty-five hours a week. You can see just an example, Tuesday to Friday, ten to four PM, a couple afternoons a week for working parents, open on Saturday for five hours, but we close two days a week. So, let's see, oh gosh, sorry, this. So again, with that little exercise, let's say we're open, thirty-five hours of open play, we got to put in at least five hours of staff time to clean up at the end of every shift. That's forty hours a week. Let's say it's part-time staff, the going rate is seventeen dollars an hour, that gives you thirteen sixty. Let's say we do it fifty weeks of the year, that's sixty-eight thousand to do that, two staff. And, you know, two staff is really reasonable, because you have a front desk area, you could have a lot of kids, and we think that had made sense. In addition to that, there would be a need for some full-time programming staff, so this is, you know, either reshifting what we have, but to oversee an operation like this, you know, fifty percent of a full-time person really at a minimum, to do things like hire, train, supervise, part-time staff, establish rules, manage, purchase replacement items, coordinate rentals, seek those sponsors. You know, it wouldn't be hard to fill up the task involved in that. And then, you know, thinking about the revenues, well, what would we need, you know, what would we need to, to generate just to meet cost? And so that's what this, on the right side, is just a projection saying, okay, let's say our goal is fifty kids a day, six dollars a kid. You know, we would have a discount for residents, so it would be even less for them, but let's just say we try to shoot for three hundred dollars of revenue a day. So fifty kids a day, five days a week, that gives that seventy-five thousand dollars annually of a revenue. So, okay, we got that. There's potential for rental opportunities, field trip birthday parties, but, so the bottom right, you can see the cost of staff, through in a very minimal toy replacement, just assuming, I mean, kids play hard, so there's just going to be replacement. I learned that from the places I've visited. So that, that's kind of the scenario where you're just sort of breaking even with direct costs. And again, not addressing kind of overhead, long-term, you know, and I just think you need just some sponsorships or a dedicated staff person, really, so. And so much of that would really, the success of something like this, really just comes down to the staff. You need invested staff to clean, repair, keep up in an area, so that, you know, people want to come back again and again. And the photo there is, you know, one of the things when I toured, I was, really stuck with me was the storage in the workshop space to repair and replace. I mean, it is just mind-blowing. So the challenge is staffing, maintenance, keeping up the replacement and storage. So these are the really big concerns that we had, that we've talked about. And of course, then we started thinking, well, what ideas, like, what are the other ideas to manage this? That photo there is the new library at Redford, and you can see the play elements, which is now kind of a new theme, libraries are having more play areas. And so we were like, ah, I wonder if the library would want to partner? We could either do some satellite things, we could turn a couple of the areas into reading nooks, things like that. And we talked to the library, invited them out, and I don't know if Tim wants to talk a little bit about this, but some other ideas.
Well, as we discussed a little on the tour, and as Erica just mentioned, first, it wasn't too long ago, Erica and I stood in the Imagination Station, and, you know, I just thought, oh, the feel I got from what was already kind of white box there was like, it's like a, it's like a children's library. It just had a real good feel to it that, you know, and, and then I thought, well, you know, let's reach out to the library and see where we could share some common interest here, is, is, could they put some remote programs? And then James came over, and we had a discussion about that, and then both he and I kind of had a meeting of the minds about, well, library is looking for a location. And so, nothing concrete, but we have gone a, a few steps in just, you know, information gathering, and the mutual benefit of, we both share the same source of revenue, ultimately, it's taxpayer dollars. And ultimately, our job as a city manager, and as a library director, and as a city board, and a library board, is to maximize the value of each taxpayer's dollar, so they can get the most out of it. And I cannot ignore the, the connection between as much space and as much square footage, as much land as we have here, and the fact that we already, they already share one of our buildings in town, that there's a possible connection that maybe the library could move over here. Of course, that's a, it's a longer discussion, but I wanted to get some direction by the next time council meets, and definitely, you never buy a car the first time you go to the dealership, so I'm, I'm broaching that subject kind of officially now, is just to start those kind of discussions, and I know it'll be a topic at the next library board meeting, and I'll be present there, just to, just to start walking down that path and see if there can be a, a connection between the city and the library again, to maximize the benefit of what, as I talked about in the beginning, is a huge piece of property with a lot of high operational costs. And they have some things they need to accomplish, and we have some things we need to accomplish, and if we put those two together, I think that's the way we can best serve the taxpayer. So, you know, there's nothing concrete, there's no agreement in place, boards have to discuss, a lot away from it, but I think it's a hundred percent worth exploring. We can take anything that has happened over the course of time, and, and like I said, those are all sunk costs, even though they weren't costs, there were things that happened in relation to the library and the city's relationship. I, I, again, I'm looking to the future to maximize the benefit to the resident, and that's, that's my goal. Ultimately, that's when I take office, that's, as a city manager, that's what I'm supposed to offer to council, things like that. So that is something I would like, you know, our next budget meeting, just to get some input during the goal session from council. I think it'd be a great time for that, and some time to ponder, though, is, if that's an interest of a majority of council, for me to go forward and continue those discussions.
Yes.
Never buy a car the first time you go to the dealership now. But no, so, but ultimately, because there's so much shared interest in that space, and if you've walked through the, the Imagination Station as it is, I just thought kids library, I've seen so many pictures and heard so much about the Redford Library and how impressive it is, from Garden City residents. And if you get a chance, go visit it and get a vibe from the connection we see between that, and I just think it'd be an asset. We are next to the middle school. I'm told by James that right around middle school, the library starts losing kids. So what a cool opportunity for them to come after school. As I said, actually, in my interview for this job, that one of the things I thought a city manager's job to do is to create situations where children have an opportunity to learn and, and perform better, not, first, the benefit of all society, our kids do better, they get smarter than you. But from a little bit of a selfish city interest is, the better school districts you have, the better your property value is, the more successful your city is. The higher they score on those standardized tests, the better your property value goes up. It's not something I love, but it's a fact. And if we can connect this, this building with the middle school and increase the educational opportunities of our children in this town, and, and see those great results, just from maximizing that value, I think it'd be fantastic. Again, nowhere in the, there's no contract ready to be signed, this is just entering into some discussions, but I'd like, it's very convenient that our first goal says setting is on the tenth, and our, and the library board's on the twelfth. I think those things line up nice, and sometimes, you know, the universe pushes you in the right direction, hopefully, and, you know, all these dates lined up for a reason. And, but just something I wanted to talk about tonight, put that idea out there, get council's input at the next meeting, and, and then go forward with just those discussions and see where we land. It may, it may not, but I, I think it's worth the old college try, so.
Tim, I just want to say thank you for building the relationship back with the library. We needed that.
We, we all serve the same folks, so.
Okay, and then, of course, if, if that doesn't work out, we are going to continue to look for a way to make the work that's been done, give it an opportunity to be enjoyed by the community. So even if that's not an avenue, there may be entrepreneurs out there, you know, just, we're keeping every idea on the table, so. All right, let's talk about the teaching kitchen, you know, the vision revisit operationally and just the goals. So, you know, let's see here. You know, one of the things, you know, operationally speaking, that we're, is challenging right now, is food classes are expensive. We know the food costs are just rising for all of us, you know, both in what I've researched and experienced, you know, cooking classes can be really expensive. We're offering some super affordable things right now that are really successful, but, you know, the model is not meeting the cost. We're losing too much on it, so we're going to have to adjust that, and it really is like framing, but where are we going to go with a teaching kitchen? So I think it's really important, you know, to think about the teaching kitchen and, and just bring down our expectations, like, there's, I think there's some potential with a downsize and a rescale to accommodate the programs that we're running, that we know we can, you know, benefit when we do host events or catering, and just different, different opportunities, but I think it may have to look differently. Let me see what other notes I wanted to share. You know, just, okay, so on this slide, you know, thinking about how would, how could we run this? Again, it comes back to staff. These things don't just run on their own, we would need staff coordinating. You know, there's so many things involved when you're dealing with food, whether it's preparing for a cooking class, coordinating room use for others, seeking food sponsorships, you know, teaching classes. So even if we did twenty hours a week for twenty dollars, you know, it's twenty thousand dollars, and I don't think we're going to generate cooking class revenue to kind of meet that. So those, again, are costs that if, if we can't really find that in our budgets, we've got to think differently about how we're going to run these. One of the model that I saw out in Grand Rapids, or at Kentwood Parks and Rec, was the seventy-thirty split. So that's where an instructor works as an independent contractor, they take seventy percent of the class fees, the department gets thirty. That model, the department was responsible for food purchasing, they had a nice sponsorship. An instructor then, you know, we have to find a price point that is like appropriate for the community, but also is worthwhile for the instructor time. So that's a delicate balance, but we are looking at that right now, just to minimize the loss on our, our current programming in that area. But the main concerns are limited capacity for staff management coordination on that. So what could a new vision look like? We saw that room, downsize, be open to a different space. It's hard to give up that, that vision. I mean, I loved it too, but, you know, some of the benefits, we could bring the cost down. down, redirect the money, and then still create something that's gonna support the operation and be a functioning part of this building that is, is really missing here at this, this big building. So we looked at the space, this is a rendition of the existing store with the swing into the, what I'll call the original kitchen. What's convenient is there is a three-sink thing that is almost a code, just a little bit of plumbing, things to fix, easy access to the outside for venting of ovens, a hand sink in existing, there could be, I think with some creativity, there's a few options, and one of our contractor who's so brilliant, just did a quick demo of some ideas. I think this version, he's got opening up the wall, you know, I think that would just come down to budget and really what we have available, but we could create a few different spaces for, for doing some cooking, the salsa making, just some of the ideas that have been floating around, you know, in that space. So that's some of the ideas. Again, this is where we're looking to counsel to, when we get to the last slide, where we're talking about the buckets of the money left, where do we want to put what and where? So these are some of the ideas. And then the gym, I already mentioned, the most requested space in our building, most in line with our master plan goals for adult wellness and fitness, the demand for this sort of activity and space, just the versatility. And, you know, when you think back, the whole entire renovation plan really centered around a gym addition, and it's funny how we sort of got to the end and we had like 100,000 left. And so I think there's interest in council that we've heard. I know the staff, this has always been their desire, because the staff know the demands, they know what people, what goes. And so we're definitely interested in what can we do to invest in this space and add more recreation-based activities? So this is a diagram of what we have, so 63 by 83 on the long side. I put in some dimensions that are relevant, just in case you're wondering, a high school basketball court is 94 feet in length by 50 pickleball and volleyball courts, just for reference. So you can see how we could certainly fit, how many pickleball did we, is it three, is it, I think, I think it's two or three, because of the audio box in the wall that kind of interfere with some of it. So that's our existing, a first option. This is, now, this gym space is our existing dimensions, not counting the stage. So we just started looking at, let's remove the audio box, the divider doors, we could add four basketball hoops, do them short side, so it's not obviously full court. And you can even see the half-court lines, there's really not enough space to do two of them side by side, but you could certainly set up a key on the other side, there's pickleball in there, a drop-down divider we looked at is affordable. And then, option two, we started looking at, well, what if we could remove the stage? Take the stage out, now we gain 28 feet, we've now gotten rid of the other things, and this is one way to look at it. So now you can get four pickleball courts, again, probably four basketball, volleyball could easily fit in here. There's thought we could do two dividers to make three spaces, so you could either, you know, divide it by one pickleball court, 30 feet, and then 50 feet and 30 feet, so breaking it up into multiple spaces we could look at. We could also look at it kind of this way, if we wanted to get four half-court basketball in there, there's four pickleball lines, just again, showing you the dimensions. It doesn't necessarily mean it would be these colors and all of that. Volleyball are the black lines, so that could be in there somewhere. So again, there's just some different options, and this is where we just wanted to explore the interest and what feedback we could get on that. And to give just some numbers with that, the basketball hoops, we got a couple quotes, depending on how many we got, it could be 14,000 for a pair, and these are the kind that are up, up in the raptors and come down, and then they lower, if you want to do youth basketball, too. So that's the price range on those. The gym divider, we could get a couple of those for about 26,000. Not sure about flooring, I literally just put $75,000, because I have no idea, I would need to find a quote, not sure if we would do the whole floor, would we do a partial for the new, if the demos of the stage came down. In your packet, you'll see a quote from all phases for demo of the stage for 50,000. There are some unknown HVAC costs, because there's a couple units, we didn't look in the stage, but there's a couple units that would either need to be capped or redirected, some costs with the lights, and then just some additional funds for, you know, some of those infrastructure or additional mats for gymnastics, actually, probably should stay in there. So that's just some numbers, you know, nothing concrete. My last slide is on the miscellaneous rooms. This is the category in the grant where it's become kind of the catch-all. And for us, these are a variety of capital or identified needs that we know when the grant is over, will be very difficult to get any of these items. And this is really for us, thinking about, what do we need to operate? We got to get as much out of this grant based on the demand, like, so these are things either demanded, or we just know, if we don't do them now, they're gonna be on our capital request every year, and that sort of thing. So it's, these numbers on the side are just me, like, doing placeholder. You can see, add up all these, you know, most of them are small, there's one bigger one, that's to replace the main doors with ADA sliders. I think I'm waiting on a quote, so that's a bit of a guesstimate, I think probably on the high end, I hope. But I just wanted to share these ideas, or not ideas, just identified needs. Right now, we have about 140,000 in this bucket, and you can see, we've got about 270 asks. So if we reallocate some things, you know, this is where we as staff, as operators, as someone responsible for this building, these would be the things we would really like to see get done. And if you got, if you have any questions, I think I am like, I'm done, do you want to go to this side?
Yes, but could you, just, we've discussed this, and, but back to the gymnasium. Compared to the one that was planned to be built in addition to the building, its size, compared to our gymnasium, once we knock, if we knock the stage out, which would be bigger?
Yeah. Well, I did say this when we were in there, but if you didn't hear this, the gym, if we took out the stage and got that 111 feet by 63, would actually be bigger than the proposed $4 million gym would have been, so.
So, you know, when that, that struck me, when it was said, because I know everybody, and myself, was excited for this community to get a gymnasium. There's a lot of things you can do, you know, as a dad whose kids have played all the sports, and indoor during the winter in Michigan place that's open, that I can have them go play, you know, practices for travel soccer and baseball and those kind of things, they're just so in demand. And, and so it's just logical, that even if certain programs don't work, I certainly know there's always a market for a large, open space where you can do physical activity, and it's a no-brainer if it's bigger than the one we were gonna pay $4 million for, so.
So I think, I think we'll do your recommendations, and I think we're gonna then go into discussion and...
Ultimately, yeah, just to wrap up, I just want to summarize what, and this is the city manager's recommendation, but at the end of the day, the city manager does what the city council tells him, you're my bosses. But it is my job to go out into the world, gain information, and provide what I think you hired me to do, is provide recommendations and the way I think we should take this. So at this point, today, my first recommendation is to immediately suspend capital spending at the Radcliffe Center unrelated to building infrastructure improvements that add to the value, efficiency, and longevity of the building. Ultimately, what I mean is, of course, we want, we need, we have a grant for an HVAC, we need to put a new HVAC system in, it's gonna save us money, it's an infrastructure that'll have value forever. Replacing doors, roof, any roof, additional things to be finished there, anything that adds value and longevity to the building. Creating an ADA bathroom based on grant money, that bathroom's gonna last forever, but as far as putting more money into the imagination station right now, and furthering that project, I want to stop that. I do want to tidy it up, I do want people to be able to walk into it and have some of the countertops that were already purchased placed, some of them, there's a few in for the penny, in for the pound things. But developing it in a place where it's essentially white boxed and prepared for the next idea that comes along that we could utilize that for, whether it's us, whether it's the library or a private vendor. To finish out some of these things, and then immediately suspend and reevaluate programs where cost exceed revenues. As I started with my bummer slides in the beginning, we have to be very cost-conscious in what we do, even if it's a popular program, I would love to just evaluate based on popularity, but we are not in a financial position where we could say, this is a popular program, even though it's losing us a lot of money. It's not about the money, but you can't do things without the money, and if we're losing it as fast, and some of these programs lose, I want to stop that right now. But those that are popular, that meet cost or come close to cost, I think should continue, because if we can do it at the same price and it doesn't hurt the budget, then we need to do it. But if it's not, even if it's a well-liked program, but it doesn't, right now, we can't afford, because we're gonna have to be making choices between those programs and some other part of the city or some other part of the building. So I want to just immediately suspend those. I'd like you to empower me, as I kind of mentioned when I was discussing with the library, to seek tenants and partners to occupy and utilize the building and land to the community's overall benefit. Example is to discuss with the library. I want to help offset the cost and maximize the value of our money already spent. I want to bring somebody in to partner with us to help utilize this space where the community gets the most out of it with the least harm to our budget, so our other operations continue to be as successful as they are. I want to move towards the just discussed alternate vision of, I'd like to get the teaching kitchen moved to this side of the, of the building, utilizing some of the art of the access and the infrastructure that's there, lower those costs to the teaching kitchen, take those costs, put them into the gym, give this community a large, open-area space that's consistent with the master plan and what I think our community can get value out of, that also has lower operational costs in the future. You see, we're putting a brand-new concession stand and a brand-new entrance in, which is immediately adjacent to a gym. The proximity of those to each other, make them a nice combination, you check in, you can get a drink, you can purchase some concessions while your kid's in there playing half-court basketball, or you're, you're just come out of a pickleball game. But there's also someone there so close to the gym that they're monitoring it, so I don't need two staff somewhere else in the building to do the same project, I can maximize the value of that staff. And that dovetails into developing a staffing plan consistent with the needs for that alternate vision, more in line with the financial constraints we face. You know, our staffing needs to be evaluated to meet a much, and it will be, and I want council to understand that it'll be a reduced amount of things we can do, the more people you have, the more you can do. It's that way in police work, it's that way in fire, it's that way in DPS. But we have to be conscious that we're fiscally responsible in what we're doing, and how much staff we have, and how much that costs us. So we have to have staffing plans that's in line with that. We set a goal to have this new plan at least begin during the new fiscal year, I want to stop a lot of these costs, but at the same time, I want to start moving that plan before we even wait till the next budget year. I want to take, I've set, we're probably on pace, initially, we were budgeted to take $2.5 million out of the general fund. We've cut costs, we're probably traveling at about 5% lower than we were at, so we're saving at about 1.3 million right now. I just basically stopped everything we could stop, other than those that provided real good value at a good cost, pretty much all spending, we've left a lot of spots open that were vacant when I took over, and I've kept them vacant. So we'll continue to eat away at that 2.5 this year, but the sooner I start realigning this plan and these, this center's costs and Parks and Rec costs with what we're gonna do in the future, the sooner we start saving that money, and I take less out of the general fund. And then lastly, this is important, it'll take some time, because we have renters, and, but I would like to examine the Maplewood Center's costs and liabilities really well, I have a good idea of them, but ultimately, developing a plan to address the costs and the liabilities, it's an older building, we have renters in there, we're responsible for that building, we have to maintain it. I'm worried that we continue to be in it and we accept rent right now, but it's not meeting our utilities plus our future infrastructure costs. So I want an eventual goal of selling that property and getting out of that, whether it's selling it to someone who wants to continue to operate and maintain it, or sell it to a developer who wants to put houses there, it makes no difference, well, I have a preference, but ultimately, what I want to do is get the city's liability, because when you purchase large buildings, you are purchasing something, somewhere you can do something at, but you're also purchasing a liability, something you're gonna have to care for in the future. And I think it's my job, especially because the city government shares so many critical, important things that save lives on its budget's back, that you don't add these large building risks more than you have to, that the community can benefit. And having Maplewood and Radcliffe just to me doesn't align with where we should be liability-wise. A roof collapses over there, or, not that I think it's going to, or the boiler blows up, you know, that's a huge cost that we wouldn't budget for until it happened, and then we have to start putting money away in order to replace it, so I'm not inclined, given our current budget situation, to have to figure that out, too. I'd rather move towards, move towards getting us out of it. You know, and that, there's a lot of pieces to the puzzle, a lot of things have to happen, you know, the plans as far as even Maplewood would have, would change with different events, but as a goal, as something to work towards, I think these seven things give us some things we can do in the short term, and then give us some long-term wins. I think that gym would be a huge long-term win. I think we have enough funds left with ARPA to accomplish a lot of it. If we do a really good job on the HVAC bids, if we save some money there, we'd have some HUD money we could throw towards some things, too. But again, it's progressing as those things happen, and not spending the money and hoping it happens. Someone said many times to me that hope is not a financial plan, and I don't plan on using that as a financial plan. We're gonna have reasonable expectations, and if opportunities present themselves, we'll take advantage of them, we'll, we'll, we'll make the city better, but otherwise, we'll operate in a fiscally responsible level manner and continue to provide. This city has done so good during some really terrible times, and we've done better than our neighbors, and we've out, we've outlasted some recessions, and, and we've kept great employees, and it's been a great relationship, I just want to continue to maintain that. So that's my reason for these recommendations, and I think at this point, we're open to council discussion and thoughts.
Okay, first, I want to thank you and Ms. Smith for the tour and the, all the packet and all the information. I think we got a lot of valuable stuff out of this. So at this point, council, do you have questions or comments?
Yeah, whatever you have, absolutely, looking for input.
First, I'd like to tell you what amazing job you both did. I know you got a challenge on your hands, and you know I've been a voice in your heads about that gym since I got elected, so I appreciate all you've done, and I'm amazed at what you've turned accomplished here. And that being said, like Tim Gibbons said, we're at a fork in the road here. One thing I did promise in my campaign is that I wouldn't raise the taxes for anything. This building is right at the top, I refuse to do that. We have to work within our budget. In order to do that, we got to figure out ways to bring money in. I've got some ideals, I'm, I like the ideal of incorporating a technological center here, maybe renaming it Rec Tech or something like that, but I approached one of the bigger heating and cooling businesses in the city, and told them we're just at a brainstorming stage now. Would you be in a wrestling sponsoring, maybe providing an instructor, some furnaces and air conditioners to support the program? I approached the owner, she's only one voice, she's actually gonna approach her executive board this Friday and brainstorm themselves and get back with me next week. But I'm also thinking of, well, the heating and cooling classes, from my research, four to six weeks are usually 1,500 to $3,000 per course. I'm thinking of welding, that might be over our heads, welds are expensive to run, things like that, but they're six months to two years, 5,000 to 50,000 dollars per class, per student. Oh, drivers ed, simple course, all kids need it, $400 per kit. Maybe we can get our community involved, Gordon Chevrolet, we got a couple dealerships here to rent us a cheap car, shirt, or whatever, that's $400 per student, I can't remember that far back, but I, I'm thinking it's one-week course, not sure.
Sure, but, yeah.
That's a good thing, the way they drive nowadays. Truck driving classes, I know they used to have truck driving classes here at Schoolcraft, I'm a graduate of Tranco and Taylor. I had to wait two months to get in class, it was $5,000 per student, these classes were packed, we had 20 students, we had two trucks, two trailers, maybe Tranco would want to come over here to this area. It's, it's big money, sure there's costs, costs involved, trucks are, good-use trucks, like 15 to 20,000, you would need two, trailers are 2 or 3,000 dollars apiece, and you've got insurance, maintenance, things like that, perfectly capable, we're doing out here. The trucks used to park in the southwest corner, we have the vacant room right at the corner there, the old hospital room or whatever it was. Oh, a couple other ideals, though, you know, I was always talking about expanding the weight room, that's the biggest thing I hear from our residents, we have nothing from 20 to 50-year-olds, they want the weight room and they want the gym, this is a rec center. center. I think I had a lot of other stuff, the teaching cafeteria. I was somewhat flip flopping on that until I did my research. These things are huge for the future. There's so many different departments and schools putting them in for health reasons. Like we know we got the Silver Sneaker program. I'm sure we can get into some kind of program with government funds to support that. I do have an issue with the 70/30 split. I'm thinking more 50/50. We're providing the classroom, the heat, the electrical. You just add an instructor. It's kind of greedy.
All those costs built in and so 70/30 of what I guess is our, you know, if, so all those costs, I, you see, my plan is we're not losing. So I would make sure that our 30% was as big as the 50 you were just mentioning, if that makes sense.
And I'll say 30/70 is pretty standard in Parks and Rec.
But the 30 is going to be what it takes to do it. We're not losing money for someone else to come make money off this city. So.
Very good. Again, I'm happy with what you're accomplishing here. Let's keep up the good work. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question on some of these class ideas? Are you, are you proposing that we do that? Or are there demand for those businesses that need space?
I just, one heating, cooling business. I'm thinking that we do it. Again, we're providing a future for our children. Most of these classes are business oriented, but to get them out in that field. I, I took a break when I got out of my truck to drive them class. I didn't want to go across country. Waited for an opportunity to stay. A friend opened up a trucking place here by the airport and I jumped right on it. I did that for 14 years till I got bored, tired of the crazy drivers and quit.
So I hear is you're willing to run this.
I do, I do know, I do know a couple instructors that maybe, I haven't touched space with them yet.
I'll tell you, the driving school, I am all right. That is one where we have like,
we've got a great parking lot for it.
I would love to find a business that just needs the place.
Yeah. Not only that, but they used to have a motorcycle training course here.
Yeah.
They rent their little motorcycles and run around and that's probably a hundred dollars apiece too.
That's until the day we let them go.
CCW classes, classroom class. We have a firing line right here. We have officers that could help. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yep.
Is that trade school, I believe it's trade school going over, yeah. Yeah. So there's, you know, that might be, for some things, it might be a duplicate, but yeah, it's an alternative for a lot of students to go trades versus college.
Absolutely. And there's definitely, it's a recognized shortage of trades in, in the cold country. So absolutely.
Any other? Go ahead and turn your mic in.
I have a lot to say. So one, I appreciate everything that you guys have done and I really like the idea of kind of, in my words, reinventing Radcliffe, right? Because the ideas that were previous, this grandiose ideas of the card room and this teaching kitchen that costs $500,000. I'm totally with the idea of taking a step back. I thought that was a great space for those things. So since we said we are going to have a workshop, I spent the last three weeks doing nothing but researching teaching kitchens. And what I found out is that all of our ideas were antiquated because now teaching kitchens are not what we thought. They're not the salsa class. They're not the cooking class. It's not like that at all. Starting from our federal government down, there is so many courses for teaching kitchens where we get paid for it. So now your doctor can actually write you a subscription and say, you need to go take this diabetic cooking class and we get paid for it from their insurance.
Fantastic.
So I, not a presentation, but I did a lot of research, a lot. One of them is called the Teaching Kitchen Collaborative. And they just had a seminar starting in 2006. And the next year they came back and 400 people that came to the seminar started teaching kitchens. By 2020, 900 people came back and started teaching kitchens. And they're not teaching kitchens where we have this date night. It's a teaching class in a YMCA. It's a teaching kitchen in a hospital. It's all over and it's all about health.
Nutrition and, yep, that makes sense.
SNAP program actually funds part of that for the teaching kitchen classes. There's another one called Healthy Teaching Kitchens and that's by the VA. So it teaches veterans and all their people how to cook healthy for them. That's a federally funded program. There's one that's called Food is Medicine and that's an actual Medicaid program. And they help fund it and they help, you do all kinds of classes, anti-inflammatory cooking, heart health, diabetes, anemia, everything. And it can all be written off from your doctor. So I think our focus, instead of saying the Bosco sticks at the, at the concession stand, maybe it should be about making our whole community healthier because that's where it's going with teaching kitchens. It's not about a Friday night date and a wine class. There's garden to table programs where we can actually partner with our own pantry and our community garden. We can teach the kids how to grow the food and then how to cook the food. There's our fitness room. Let's have a contest. Who can lose the most weight by learning how to cook healthy and then work out? They have them at the forum all the time. I mean, we could do that here. There's lots of them called That's Fresh Kids Cooking Teams. And it's actually for third and fourth and fifth graders and they have a class after school. And they can win prizes and they learn how to cook. There's one that's for sixth graders because we want kids as they get older to make healthy snacks. That's called the Chef Mikey Likes Class. And there's actually a really good website that anybody can go to about good food knowledge. There's also one for little kids about Food for Healthy Heroes. And it talks about the kids having superpowers and they can get foods that actually make them feel like a superhero. All these have their own curriculum. It's not something you have to, just get right online and find out about them. And it's, it's pretty diverse and it's just amazing the different things that you can come up with. One of the other curriculums was about students having a global food experience. So we're pretty diverse in Garden City. We have so many nationalities. We could have a course where, you know, you cook your food from your, from your country. That's pretty popular right now. I also found that the teaching kitchens right now are very revenue generating. So we're talking about getting revenue here. According to the report called U.S. Commercial Kitchen Incubators, it was an industry update, 69% of commercial kitchens have seen, in the last year. So besides running it out to different businesses, it talks about what it does to sustain itself because you're not only running it to the local person that maybe has a catering company, you're also promoting food education. You're also supporting the local businesses because we're getting the food from our local grocery store. And it just talks about tons of different things. I found cooking classes to go in between all those different things. Walk this way. So you, you know, a walk in there and someone comes in and teaches the class. There's a ton of healthy eating grants. The American Culinary Federation does a grant for teaching kitchens, Whole Foods Kids Foundation, Teaching Kitchen Collaborative, the first one I mentioned, Chef Emerald and like 10 other chefs all have different programs that you can start to teach kids. I just think that it's something that we could do to really make our, our whole community healthy again. And we talked about, I think someone else mentioned it when we were walking around, about donations. It's amazing how many of these kitchens started because they got a donation from Best Buy or they got a donation from Home Depot, which carries a whole commercial line of kitchen stuff. So again, I just want to say, I never expected the teaching kitchen to be up here. Everything at Radcliffe does not have to be the top notch. So I did a lot of research and I saw the budget on here that you had as 150. They have double decker commercial ovens, hoods for the ovens, commercial fridges that are three times bigger than this one in here, sinks that you have already, cookware, labor, all that kind of stuff. And it came out to $150,000, which was your budget.
Bingo.
So I really think that we could, we could put in something really good. And one of the things we already started was I noticed in there that you had no, or you just had the shelving units. And all of these kitchens are made with instead of countertops and spending the money on the cabinets and all that, it's all just the stainless steel. So instead of saying, because it's kind of set up already like a demonstration kitchen, not a teaching kitchen, because it's just right in the middle. But original view of having six stations, those tables are $150, high quality. I mean, that's pretty affordable for us to do that. So I think it would work in that space and I just think that we could do it and it could be something really good, but with a different idea. It's reinvented than when it could be.
Yeah, I think we were really focused on that original concept of it. And I'm so glad to hear, especially the insurance companies, because you know, they're doing it for health and making our community healthier. There's alignment between community benefit and not just entertainment. I like that.
The previous administration, the Biden administration started a whole program on getting, reeducating doctors that food matters. And so they can actually start taking courses themselves and learning about good cooking and then referring it to their patients through prescriptions. So I think that, that we can make it happen. I think it could be very revenue generating for the space.
I want to just say thank you for doing all that research and I would love.
Because you don't have any extra time, I know.
Yeah. I mean, I will say, who's going to do all that? I thought you were volunteering it first. I did want to say, you reminded me, the food pantry actually has one of those programs that is funded.
Yes, the SNAP, right?
Yep. And they currently set up in the craft room. And if we have another facility, they could expand it. And I think you're absolutely right. There's a lot of potential there.
And then the other thing with other grants too, is you were talking about the master plan and how if it's something we're doing is not in the master plan, we can amend the master plan and.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And then it would be included in that DNR and all that kind of stuff.
Yep.
That's absolutely right.
I think that we could do that very easily. And then I also wanted to say that you were talking about the gym. We've been going to Churchill on Friday nights. They have a softball clinic there and it's over 50 girls and it's from ages 18 down. It's all the softball teams around here. And it's 10 bucks to get in and there's 50 girls every week. And they have really cool gym dividers there. So if you haven't been over there, that may be a space to go.
Was it Churchill?
Churchill, yeah. And it's, I mean, you get a bunch of softballs. It's not that hard. We already have a pitching machine, but just take a look at their gym. It's kind of cool.
Travel baseball and travel softball.
All year long.
All year long.
So it's every Friday night and it's full every night.
Yeah.
Every time.
I've had kids at those kind of things. So.
So I love the idea of reinventing Radcliffe. I am worried about some of the things that, that we're doing. And I'll, I'm not saying it's going to be negative, but I got on our website last night and I saw things like the room rental and it said, the movie room. And it said, more information coming on the movie room soon. More information coming soon. These rooms have been done for a year and a half. We need to, if we're going to keep the card room, reinvent it or whatever, then we need to have it really done. There's, we talked about cards, right? I had someone come into my business the other day and she is in something called The Girl Gang. And there's like 60 women from Wayne and Washna. And guess what? They're looking for something to do. So they do activities together. When I said, how about the card room at Radcliffe, they were right on it. So I think that getting more ideas, I mean, we're not talking about spending money. We're talking about ideas, right? We're talking about making a phone call. So.
Card, card rooms, they're already built. So.
Right. It's there. So let's do something about it. There's lots of, of things like that. And we also talked about the movie theater and hopefully licensing or maybe the library that's going to get there. But there's a lot of other things that could be updated on our website. There's, there's different hours for the game room, the adult game room. One spot says at 7 o'clock. One spot says it's 8 o'clock. It still has the old console on there, the old rec connect on there. So there's no classes on there now, starting from February. So, and then the other thing that I noticed is there's not a lot of adult programming, like Mia Protemp said. There's nothing. If you look at the calendar right now, there's one thing, there's a yoga class. So I think we have this adult game room. Let's start a pool night. And maybe because it's not in a bar, the first group we call is AA and say, we have this game room. You don't have to drink or go to the bar. Come on over here, you know, every Thursday or, or whatever. So I think there's, you know, I think there's other ideas out there that we could do. Do we have someone that's doing adult programming?
No. And that would be my response is you can see where we have staff and what they do. That's where we have programs. We don't have an adult programmer. So those things kind of fall off. And, you know, I will say, thank you for letting me know about the website. It's just, those are things that we don't see or I know that one and we should, we will get that fixed tomorrow. But let, let me know. It's just sometimes hard. There's a lot of pages. We've done a lot of work, but obviously we miss things. So.
I just want us to be successful here. Regarding the adult programming or the kid programming, we have the esports and I heard how many kids are actually coming over. Do we have someone that's designated that, that called Romulus or Dearborn Heights or Westland and said, hey, do you have an esports team? Have we done that yet?
Well, I tried to hire a part-time person to do that and we could not have because of our budget issues. So that's the struggle is if we don't have staff to do it, like there is not time in my day to do that.
So right now, when this goes on TV, I can say we're looking for a techie person that can make phone calls and fill up her esports.
Well, it's, it's actually not the phone calls. It's the, it's the servicing, the teams with the computers while they're there.
Yeah, but I mean, we're doing that. So if we're, we're getting rentals, right?
We are, yes. And we are working on developing, because there's no tech support.
It's an expertise.
It is a, it is a challenge. And we have to pull over our communications team to assist us.
That's what I'm saying. So let's ask for a techie person.
Not really equipped. I mean, we're working on it, but there's also no revenue with those so far. We had.
For other high schools?
We had one rental. No, not from my school.
Not our high school, but I'm seeing other high schools want to want to bring their team here for rental fee.
Not that we found interesting.
I don't really get it. I mean, it's possible.
You know, I mean, the coach from Divine Child has toured it, sat in the room and everything. Have they used it?
They had, they just did a rental. It was like a family or I forget what it was called.
Like a team night?
It was their first one.
Yeah. I, I might.
I'm just thinking of other communities.
I will say the esports room in itself, there's a, there's a hidden bunch of work there that's very technical and you have to be an esports person who can do it. And it's going to be, they're dedicated to just that. And that's one of those areas where I worry the cost will far exceed the benefit. We've spent the money and certainly our Garden City citizens who have children on the Garden City esports team.
I'm sure they appreciate it.
Have a room. However, you know, to be able to do that in profit, not profit, again, and again, when I speak about the cost of.
Just break even.
I don't expect, I don't even really expect a complete break even by Park Track. I just expect not a huge contribution to the budget. There's a certain point where we just can't spend it. But, but when it comes to, yes, the esports room, it is, you know, it's very hard to organize those kids in a game. It's very technical. It requires basically our communication team to stop what they're doing, come over and spend the entire time there. And not just set it up and leave, but like literally monitor the games. If something goes down, if something happens, it's like you need an entire tech support team just to watch that. It's a, it's a, it's a lot more involved than we thought. But at the same time, for Garden City High School students, our, we want those guys to win the next national championship like DC did not too long ago. So any support we can give them. But as far as branding, I'm a little hesitant just on the cost.
Okay. And then my last question was, obviously, we're going to be cutting costs at Radcliffe. One thing I keep seeing on the financial paid invoices is that we're leasing stuff, like releasing a cooler from Aramark and we've been leasing it for two years. We could have bought two of them already from the lease. So I think we.
And that is, as soon as we move into that concession stand, I'm breaking that, it's a contract break. It's a horrible contract.
Break it, break it.
But we are breaking it. And the coffee machine, it is killing us.
I saw that. And then, and then, and I saw that we have to have all these minimum orders for Aramark, right? So we're getting stuff from them and then they get the money?
You want to explain this? So we have to spend $500.
You can come on up.
I'm sorry. We have a lot of.
Okay, someone who knows.
We're required to spend $500 a month because we're leasing their coffee machine. So we have to buy $500 worth of product and then we can sell the product and obviously gain whatever revenue we gain from that. We lease the, right, over the product. So right now, to begin with, they used to sell, let's just say in our vending machines over there, they sold their pops for $2. We sold ours for $2. So if we were open, great, we got the revenue from it. If we weren't, they went to their vending machine.
So we're, have our own competition with the, who we're renting from? That makes no sense.
Yes. So now they've raised, now Aramark has raised their prices on their pops, let's just say. And so we, we are selling ours for 250. They, they make us pay 216 apiece for it. So it's worth breaking the contract is the point. Although we do have to pay a large sum to break that. We also have a vending machine contract and we have to pay the same amount of money to break that contract. But those vending machines, if, if we don't, if they don't make $350 apiece, we have to pay them the $350 apiece.
We need to cancel that. And I say those things because we have two things in Garden City that do very well. The GCOA concession stand, they buy all their stuff at Costco and they make a lot of money. Even if we almost break even or get over, I know that Almost break even or get over, I know that Mike does very well at the concession.
He does very well at the, he does Wardens, Costco, he does the different things.
Right. And Marge, I think, has been to Costco 1,000 times. So I think that doing that is better suited for us to more than break even and actually not pay someone else to get food for all the things that we're going to do.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Absolutely. And please consider those kind of things in what one of my recommendations was, if it's a program, whether it's a cooler or not, and that isn't justifying itself. And this, this is the reset button is the way I see it. Tonight is talking about hitting a reset button. And then all of those things are on the table. There's nothing that isn't on the table, especially when you're facing the kind of budgetary constraints we're, we're at right now.
I have one more question. What happened to all the sewing machines?
We still have them.
Are we doing any classes or no?
We don't have anything now, they haven't gone. I mean, we still have them. I think we had an instructor, we have to have like a minimum to make it worthwhile.
Maybe we could sell those and the computers.
Tough things. And I mean, the one thing I'll say is what's really challenging is the expectation.
Yes.
Of the activity.
Yes.
Is so big because this is so big. And while we have five full-time people, think about how many staff are in a school where everything's busy.
No, I agree with you, the expectation.
We, you know, the illustration, when you look at the budget, you see where the revenue is because that's where the staff are. That's what they're doing and working on. So without staff, it's to do all that work, the calls, you know, that's what's so difficult. Doesn't mean it can't be done, it doesn't mean the community can't help us, but that is the challenge for us.
I totally agree. So when it comes to those things that maybe we've tried and failed or we have an excess of it, we can cut costs or gain some more revenue by selling them or renting them or whatever.
Okay, thank you. Erica, can I ask you to like use the microphone? Since Mr. Gibbons is. I think Tim stole it.
Sorry, you guys missed a lot of good info.
Okay, further comments, questions from the table?
Like everyone else, I want to thank, thank you for hosting this and all the hard work you've put into this. And, and I know that council's had a lot of questions about all of this and, as well as I imagine, all the residents too. So this information has been extremely valuable. And it gives us an idea where we have, where we are. And you don't know where you're going to go until, you have no idea where you can go until you know where you are. I want to thank Stacy for all that hard work and all that research. I, it's, it's valuable and I can see where we were thinking, I think, like you say, from a long time ago about as far as kit, you know, cooking and things like that. And, and you're right. And to, to know that this has really moved in a different direction and there are a lot of different sources of revenue. So I greatly appreciate that. And then Jeff, I, Pro Tem, I, I appreciate you thinking out of the box as far as, as far, types of classes that you, you know, at least they're ideas. So I want to thank everybody for their contributions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dole.
Ditto, guys, you did a great job. But I would like to see us go out to the community, possibly put together some committees to, you know, just like, like Stacy and Jeff have done, to start thinking outside of the box, but not only that, on what programming we can do, but how to do that programming, like the sewing classes. Maybe we don't get rid of the machines. Maybe there's a senior out there that excels in that and would be willing to actually volunteer. Then maybe they're retired and they want to come in here and do that. You know, it's, it's just not out of the realm of reality for people to be willing to volunteer their time and do things like this. So possibly if you put, you know, obviously tonight, this is of great interest to our communities, more people than showed up for the master plan. So, but you know, we, we put it out there and we get some of our residents to come in and what do you guys want and how are you willing to help?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember King.
Same as everybody else. I thank, thank you for all the time and effort and all the work you guys put in to put this on. I like the kitchen, the downsizing and I think it's more practical and hopefully some of the ideas Councilwoman Carefotis brought up will gain some ground and be good for the community. The gym, I love, love the idea of pulling the stage out, getting as much space as we can. I think all that space will be utilized, using the drop-down screens, because I think you will have, you will need them to accommodate the interest from the community. I, I like, I like the trades. I like that trades idea more so renting the space. I'm a little nervous about spending more capital on something that may or may not take off. Not that there's not value in it, but more like, like the parking lot, the trucking. Let them rent this parking lot space. We gain the revenue and it's all on them to find instructors. And same with the motorcycles, same deal.
Absolutely.
Imagination Station, yep, I think it's great to stop, take a pause and make, make sure that we, you know, if we can partner with a library or another entity, I think it's a smart move going forward. The last thing I have is regarding spending the money, it's October, right? October this year, we have to have all invoices turned in. Is that for the ARPA and the HUD?
Just ARPA.
Just ARPA's October deadline?
So that's 750,000 is what we have left.
Okay. And then the.
Which is realistic.
HUD and ADA, we have more time?
And then the CDBG is actually the first deadline.
CDBG has a June 30th deadline.
That's the bathrooms.
Yeah.
Right? Okay.
Yeah.
Is that it?
That is, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember what?
Again, I'll be the sixth echo. Thank you for your time, Stacy, as well as Jeff. I wish I had as much time to be able to look and do a little bit of that research as well. I agree with Councilmember King, sorry, I'm, Councilmember Carefotis and Mayor Pro Tem Dole. But I agree with the, the space that we have in like the parking lots, it's dead space. It is, at least it's paved and we have the roadway there. We don't have the crazy amounts of foot traffic that the building could have had in the past or what the field for the, the schools needed. Until they, you know, set up again back over there. I'm really interested to see what we can come up with for Maplewood. Obviously, we had a short little conversation about 2027 being a day. But I know definitely we have needs for housing and property over there could potentially be used for housing. So I'm, I'm interested, interested to see what you come up with for the cost liabilities and how we can move forward with that in the future. I know some agreements were made between the city, the schools and how, you know, the soccer fields are affected. Obviously, I don't want to affect any of our children's programming that are done outside of our city, but you know, the building that is going to be soon here in dire need of repair. So I'm interested to, you know, get, get those aspects. I'm loving what the rooms are coming to and the ideas that have been brought. Definitely having a meeting space, because Santa Land Parade Committee that I'm on, you know, we've kind of jumped between houses, you know, different, different spaces to meet and having something available to all of the city groups to potentially use. As well as, for me tonight, I came straight from work. I would have definitely loved to have, yes, maybe not the healthiest, but some quick warm food to be able to grab and eat tonight while I left work 12 Mile and Halsted at 5:55 to be here at 6:30. So no time to stop. So again, I appreciate all of the time that you guys have put in. Love seeing it, you know, with all of the extra information jotted down. Keep doing what you guys are doing. I'm sure on Monday we'll have, you know, a vote go, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments from the table? Okay, I'll open it up to the public. Please come to the podium, because I was told by communications that it's hard to pick up value without the microphone. So if anybody would like to come up and speak? State your name for everybody, please.
Kelly Williams. My, I guess my opinion is about the gym, that a park and recs department without a gym is worthless. If we do anything moving forward, that is probably the first priority we need to do to make this building functional as a park and rec building. That's it.